Good evening. Today is the 28th of January. For those watching on videotape on a date other than a Thursday, this is the Arlington School Committee. And we have to start with some sad news. Unfortunately, Roland Chappett, who we all know as Raleigh, probably one of the most dedicated volunteers to this town, passed away over the weekend. He was the husband of Janet Sullivan, loving father of Philip Chappett and wife Lucille Wulburn, Susan Robinson and husband Spencer of Arlington, Thomas Chappett and wife Christina of Lexington, Ann Riley and the husband of John of Brockton, and John Chappett and wife Melissa Smithfield Rhode Island, survived by ten grandchildren and many nieces and nephews. Roland was a Korean War Army veteran. He served on Arlington Town Meeting for over forty-four years, a member of the Redevelopment Board, Conservation Commission, Friends of Robbins Farm, the Dallin Museum, Tourist Council. He worked on the Bracket School Council. He was on our redistricting team. And that's just a partial list. He was on committees we haven't even invented yet. He was just an amazing force for this town. Funeral tomorrow, 10:00 a.m. at St. Ulealea's in Winchester. Relatives and friends invited. So a moment of silence for Raleigh. Okay. And we have, next is public participation. Public participation is limited to three minutes. We listen while you talk. We do not respond in public participation. We may elect to go and bring your item up by a referral subcommittee later, but we won't discuss anything or act upon it tonight unless it's on our agenda. The first one is Juliette Mohr.
Good evening. My name's Juliette Mohr. I have three children at Thompson. I wanted to take this opportunity to express my appreciation for your recommendation to place modulars at Thompson and for your recommendation to support permanent construction. I'm here tonight to ask that you continue to aggressively push forward to seek funding for permanent construction at Thompson Elementary. I know that, you all know that the modulars placed at Thompson are just a Band-Aid, giving the students a one-year reprieve from the loss of our art room and large class sizes. I've sat in on the various task force meetings and subcommittee meetings, and I know that you all have the very same concerns that the parents of Thompson have about the short-term nature of the solution. Having been to the enrollment task force meetings, it's clear that many on the task force want to wait to see how Arlington's actual numbers compare with the McKibben projections. And given that Thompson is already over McKibben's projections at 4:35, I urge you to please continue to advocate for the students of Thompson and the students across town to recommend funding of a design phase for Thompson's permanent addition to avoid additional costs spent on temporary fixes. We know it's critical for funding approval to occur in April to avoid large class sizes in 2017 and 2018 and to alleviate the ongoing course base shortage that we have. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Timor Yantar?
I'm Timor Yantar, Thompson parent, precinct seven, fifteen-year resident. I'd like to comment on middle school overcrowding, and I have four points to make in three minutes, so I'm going to speak quickly. First, fast, cheap, and good. In project management, there's a maxim, if you want it done fast, cheap, and good, you can't have all three. You have to pick two. And so if you want it fast and cheap, it won't be good, and so forth. And that's what I think we're up against here right now. It's striking a balance among faster, cheaper, and better solutions. So second, what do I mean by fast? I don't mean hasty. I mean not wasting time. I mean narrowing down the options for middle school overcrowding by eliminating the ones that are just not feasible, securing the funding for these studies, doing the studies, and coming to a decision as soon as we can, because the longer that we take, the greater the risk of two things. One, that certain options are no longer options because we took too long. For example, if renovating the Gibbs is taken off the table because a feasibility study can't be done by June, which is when the town needs to notify leaseholders about renewal or not. And second, there's a greater risk that whatever suboptimal educational conditions are out there for our kids and that they'll be unnecessarily prolonged. Now, as for cheap, what do I mean by cheap? None of the options before us are cheap. We don't really know how much they'll cost. Last week, the facilities subcommittee kept putting in a placeholder of about $30 million for each of the options. I know it's been refined a bit since then, but how rigorous are the estimates? So I'd like to see a study done as soon as possible to get some real numbers for both capital costs and operating costs. Taking the Gibbs example again, for renovation costs, I've seen numbers of $30 million, $25 million, and the HMFH study that said $14 to $20 million. So from low to high, we're talking from $14 million to $30 million. That's a two-wide range, and we need to get that range narrowed down. As for operating costs, for example, what's the difference in cost between running a larger Odysseum or running a smaller Odysseum plus a new Gibbs? Teachers are the teachers, no change there. Having two schools costs more because of incremental staff. On the other hand, there are savings as well, because you wouldn't have to have to bus students from East Arlington to Odysseum. Again, we need to have hard numbers here. And why? Because the town authorities are very careful about spending the public's money and will only do so when all the homework has been done to compare the cost of the options. And finally, fourth, what do I mean by good? Again, fast, cheap, and good. Good, this may be hard to define, but I think we all know it when we see it. We want a quality educational experience for our students that prepares them well and that the town can be proud of. That's all I have. Thank you so much for your time and your attention.
Thank you. Mary Cummings.
She's the first, yeah.
Well, Linda Hansen there. You signed it in that order, so Linda Hansen.
Good evening. My name is Linda Hansen. I'm the president of the Arlington Education Association, and I want to start out by congratulating Dr. Bodie and everyone else who worked on the application for the state funding for the high school on successfully attaining entrance into the next level of MSBA funding. It's incredibly exciting, and I'm sure we'll be hearing more about it later this evening. The issue of state funding for our school building, though, is actually, leads me to a topic I want to spend a few minutes talking about this evening. Like a lot of people, I've been thinking about the congruence of all of the costs of maintaining a high-quality education in Arlington for the buildings, the personnel, the programs, and the curriculum materials. Like all of you, I have and will continue to participate in the many important meetings to attempt to come to a consensus to find the best way forward within the financial limitations we face. While we've been extremely focused most recently on working with funding decisions constrained by our local resources, the more time I've spent looking closely at the issues before us, the more I am convinced that increasing funding at the state level by raising more revenue is the only thing that will really get us where we need to be. I know you're thinking along the same lines, and it was great to see our local representatives at the last school committee meeting. They're all strong advocates for our school. But it's pretty clear that without strong and impassioned advocacy, we will continue to have to rely on regressive local property taxes to fund our schools. I want to personally commit to expending time and energy in the upcoming months to help the parents that are so committed to educational excellence in our schools understand that in order to have smaller class sizes, neighborhood schools, differentiated curriculum, high achievement, and exciting learning experiences for our students, we will need to become more vocal and effective advocates for state funding. We will need to mobilize parents, community members, and town officials, both inside Arlington and, more importantly, across the state. We have opportunities to do this before us now. The failure to capitalize on these initiatives and the failure to redirect some of the local energy to state-level solutions will leave us all with less than we would like to see. We need to engage our friends and neighbors and our respective organizations around the concrete initiatives that we have before us. I'm going to name just three. Charter school funding, nothing new there, but Arlington is currently losing $100,000 to charter schools. This total reflects the amount of Chapter 78 that will be diverted from the school district to one or more charter schools, minus the total amount of state reimbursement the district is estimated to receive. This is for eight students who live in Arlington and attend a charter school. It may be a small number compared to what we need, but it represents about one and a half teachers. We need to support the Senate's efforts to revisit and revise how charter schools divert money from local school districts. Clearly, more urban communities are suffering even more than Arlington. Our neighbors to the north and east stand to lose much more. Medford is slated to lose $4 million, and Somerville, $7 million, to charters in FY16. York Lowell, $14.7 million. Is that my timer?
Mm-hmm.
Can I have one minute of yours?
Yes.
The foundation budget. If new formulas are used from the foundation budget, Arlington would stand to gain $3.6 million. Local reps have talked about phasing in that idea, but without active vocal and organized support, we risk the report ending up on a shelf. The fair share millionaires tax, the 4% surcharge charged to income over $1 million would generate about $1.5 billion annually. I recently spent two hours talking to a neighbor about kind of the history of what's going on with the schools and local funding and why we're in the situation we're in, and at the end, I said, you know, we really need to look at state money and mentioned the millionaire's fair share tax. And she said, what's that? So I just feel like we need to draw those connections for people. And also, I just want to encourage us all to activate ourselves, but most importantly, our respective communities across the state, MASs, MASc, MMA, MTA, we all need to work together on this. Thank you.
Now it's a race.
Go.
I'm Mary Cummings, Arlington resident and speech and language pathologist at the Thompson School. And at our recent Martin Luther King event, Tito Jackson, Boston City Councilor and extraordinary activist for justice in education, I know many of you were there, and we saw him get two big rounds of applause and at least one standing ovation when he asked us to help to keep the cap on charter schools. And he talked about the damage it's been doing in places like New Orleans, but we're just focusing tonight on the cost of it to us and our schools. Charters are approved by appointed, not elected, state Board of Education members, regardless of the desires or resources of the districts that might be sending students and money to them. Charter schools are not held accountable to the local elected officials, including school committees, for how they spend our tax dollars or treat our children. Charter supporters are now investing about $18 million to either get our legislators to pass the governor's bill to raise the cap or convince voters to pass the ballot question that would raise the cap. I think we're all in agreement that we want to keep that cap on. We're concerned about the fact that most people know very little about charter schools or the impact they can have on our schools here in Arlington, and we want to work together to bring that to people's attention. I've given each of you a button made by my own hands that says "Public Funds for Public Schools," and we're asking that you or a surrogate wear those buttons, just doing errands, just to the grocery store. And we're just looking to get it out there so people can see something, so that when we call them or invite them to an information meeting, they'll have some idea that, oh, this is the kind of thing that I... It's like the yard signs. I've seen that yard sign. This is a little bit familiar. So we want to push them out now to make them familiar. And then we want to have some community information meetings to help the community to understand what charter schools are, because they think they only impact Boston and other urban areas. So we've got to work together and work hard. Can you imagine? If we cut out the option of charter schools, then we would give the millionaires and billionaires a chance to prove that they really care about educating our kids, and they could take some of their $18 million and give it to us instead of putting it in lobbying for charter schools. Just think of that. That's right on the button.
You go.
Hi. My name is Lisa Newmark, and I have two children at Thompson. I've been following the enrollment challenges, issues, and have been attending the meetings. And I just wanted to request that going forward, there's more of a significant review and acknowledgement of what the evidence and research might say about the options that are on the table, so that we understand what the trade-offs might be as the options are being evaluated. So, for example, there's a tremendous amount of research about the impact of large schools and the potentially negative impacts, the impacts on increasing the number of school-to-school transitions, and, you know, a general consensus that children perform worst when there's a greater number of transitions. And I haven't really heard that being part of the framework of evaluation as we're going, as everyone's, you know, considering the feasibility of the options. And I'm seeing that, you know, other communities are dealing with the same issue, so there are these opportunities to learn from what others have done, and particularly the impact on students' learning and social development, social-emotional development. And so going forward, I'd like to hear more of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Tito Jackson was mentioned. And at the Martin Luther King event, we received a resolution from the legislature that I read aloud at the King event, but the resolved statement is that Massachusetts General Court hereby commends the Arlington Metco program for 50 years of excellence and further extends its sincere best wishes for continued success, and be it further resolved that a copy of these resolutions be transmitted forthwith by the clerk of the Senate to the Arlington Metco program. And so we are in receipt of this resolution. Arlington is one of the original Metco towns. We were one of the towns that made it happen, and this was a tremendous source of pride for us on the Martin Luther King night, as well as an expression of gratitude from Councilor Jackson from Boston. So I'll pass around the resolution so you can read it as we proceed on to the next item on the agenda, which is AHS Seal of Bili literacy.
I'd like to introduce this evening our Director of ELL, which is Carla Bruseze, and our Director of World Language, Catherine Ritz, who have both been here before. And they're here tonight to talk about a certificate program that they will be collaborating on going forward.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. So we wanted to share with you an initiative that really spans the world language world and the ELL world to award recognition to students for developing proficiency in two languages, in English, obviously, and a second language. I want to just give you a little background about this movement, because it's really a national movement, the Seal of Bili Literacy, and then Carla's going to go into some specifics of how we've developed the seal that we'd like to pilot this year with our students at the high school. So this movement started in California in 2011. The state passed an official designation for a state seal of bili literacy. It's now spread to 14 states that have official state seals, including New Jersey, New York, Virginia, Texas, New Mexico, Indiana, and so on. And then there are three states that currently have legislation pending to establish an official state seal, including Massachusetts. So we're hopeful that this will become an official state seal this year. And in case you're curious, the legislation is called the Act to Establish a State Seal of Bili Literacy. So I've been collaborating with some of the teacher organizations that I work with in a SEAL working group to develop state guidelines for the SEAL, and there's a number of districts throughout Massachusetts that are piloting the SEAL. A few piloted last year, and an increasing number are piloting this year. For example, Melrose, Andover, and many more, Framingham, Holliston, Boston is also piloting a SEAL. So Carla and I have been working on this along with one of the guidance counselors, Carolyn Lichter, and one of the Spanish teachers in my department, Christine Choro, to come up with guidelines. So I'll pass it over to you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Carla. I'm actually really excited that this initiative is coming to Arlington, because it is actually validating languages and literacy. So I was really excited when Catherine reached out to me if I knew anything about this. I'm also a member of the Matt Saul Professional Directors Association, and they're jumping on board as well with modern language and foreign language. So how we came up with our working group on the Seal of Bili Literacy is that we'd like to award three different awards for bili literacy, a silver seal, a gold seal, and a platinum seal. And we have certain requirements and criteria for students to achieve these different levels in seals. The silver seal, we're looking at foreign language students that receive an intermediate or mid proficiency in English in their partner language. And for ELL students, we're looking for an access state score of a level four or higher. And for the gold seal, we're looking at intermediate high, which is for foreign language. And then for ELL, we're looking at a 4.5 on their state testing for English. And then in the platinum seal, we're looking at advanced low proficiency in English in their partner language. And then for ELL learners, we're looking for a level five. We have kind of collaborated using the guidelines from the state, but as well in our mini piloting group committee. Our criteria for English proficiency, we're looking at the MCAS scores for high school students for 240 or above, and we're using the access scores for ELL learners to get that English proficiency. And then one of the following is also required for students to demonstrate a seal of bili literacy. Proficiency demonstrated on a standardized assessment, the ACFL, the Acful Assessment of Performance Toward Proficiency in Languages, it's available in Arabic, Chinese, French, German, Portuguese, Russian, Spanish, and in English. The cost is $20. Or the stamp standard-based measurement of proficiency, it's available in Chinese, Arabic, French, Hebrew, Japanese, German, and Italian. The cost is $22. Or the ALARA, the Acful Latin Interpretive Reading Assessment, which is a cost of $10. We're still figuring out how, actually, the ELL directors are trying to figure out if we can use some Title III funding for students that have hardship measures and can't pay the fees for these assessments. Or we're looking for either the assessment or a portfolio demonstration, and students would have to bring together three to five benchmark pieces of classwork or projects demonstrating the following in the student's second language for English for the ELL students, and then for the foreign language students, the proficiency in the language that they're targeting. I don't know if there's any other questions.
Yeah. Another point I just wanted to stress is that this designation really emphasizes proficiency. It's not a seat time certification, so we really feel like that's an important piece to emphasize, that we can honor ELL students who bring a really rich background and proficiency in their home language, that is honored in the school, and students of foreign language who've developed a high-level proficiency in the language that they've been studying at school. We then are, we're planning on piloting it, rolling this out to students this year for our current junior class, and then the following fall, awarding students. We have these lovely medals that we would give students for graduation, and I have a little present for everyone, and I won't hold you to this. This is a little bumper sticker. I won't make you put it on your car, but in case you would like it, it's, I support the state seal of bili literacy. So I'll pass these around. And just really briefly, and then I'd love if you have any questions for us. Carla's and I are collaborating a lot this year. We're also working on, thanks to the guidance of Dr. Bodie, a global competency program at the high school. So that's really under works. We have just a draft guideline, but that's also an initiative. That's in a number of local districts. It started in Needham High School. And it's kind of an academic program where there's certain courses that you want to see the students have take. You want to see some foreign language proficiency, and then they also have to do a global engagement research project. We hope that it would also include a travel component. So we'd love to come back when that's really flushed out and presented to the school committee as well. So if you have any questions, we're happy to address them.
Mr. Pierce.
Well, thank you. And I definitely support this program from what I've seen on the website and what you've given us. It seems like such a great added benefit for our students who are going on to college. Perhaps they could put that in their applications, that they were awarded such a designation. My question is really sort of in the future for our district, what you think about starting with proficiency and students with languages earlier than middle school and how we can get there.
Music to her ears.
How can we get there?
Yes. Well, I would defer to Dr. Bodie and Dr. Chessna. I am 100% in support of that initiative. I know we both are.
I would be, too. We could start even in preschool.
Because I'd love to see these people get, these students get awards in fifth grade rather than...
Yeah. They actually have, we started with the high school one, but there is a middle school seal as well, but we just decided to start in the high school. So let us know what we can do.
Again, thank you very much. I have two grandchildren in the Spanish immersion program in Maine. How many other towns are doing what you're doing? Or is this a growing? Let me, I don't need to know the exact number, but it's a growing thing throughout the state.
Yeah. It's growing throughout the state.
Does it have any, I don't mean to be materialistic about it, but succeeding on this, this goes on the permanent record going forward to college and stuff like that, does it have any effect, or is the program still just too new to...
We had, so in some states, they actually put a sticker, like a certification, on the actual transcript or have it written on the transcript. With Carolyn Lichter representing the guidance department, we decided in our initial year, most schools are, they have digital applications, so a sticker wouldn't make that much of a difference. And we decided, let's wait and make sure this program's successful before we start looking at ways to get it actually printed on the transcript through power schools. So we decided to wait on that one, but possibly.
Is there enough evidence to make a determination how receiving schools are responding to it, universities?
At universities, I don't think we have that information quite yet. Yeah.
Thank you.
But I'm confident, I mean, assuming that this gets passed in the legislature and becomes an official state seal, I think we'll see it grow increasingly in more and more schools.
Thank you.
I don't know why you're doing SEALs. We don't have a harbor. Can we do river otters? No, this is a wonderful thing, and to add that recognition in for students who achieve bili literacy, I think it's a wonderful thing. We have such a diverse population and so many languages being spoken in our schools and in our town and in my home. I'm an illiterate in my own home. I can't read more than half the books, but that's okay. You're not going to fix that for me. But I wish you well, and please come back if there's anything else we can do for you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Next item would be today's students, tomorrow's teachers, with an update. Mr. Spiegel.
Okay. Thank you. So as you know, for the past several years, Arlington participated in the today's students, tomorrow's teachers, or TSTT program. The mission of the program is to recruit, mentor, and train culturally diverse and economically challenged students from high school through college and place them as effective teachers and committed leaders in the schools and communities. It's a pipeline program to start students in high school thinking about careers in education and follow them through college and hopefully return to teach in your school district. It's part of our effort to recruit more teachers of color into our classrooms. It's a career development model that does increase culturally diverse educators in schools. It's a program that's been going on in New York State for more than 20 years. It was founded in Westchester County in 1994. And in the 2011-12 school year, it was expanded into the greater Boston area with four school districts, Arlington, Andover, Brookline, and Lexington. At the end of the 2014-15 school year, those four school districts had their first cohort of seniors graduate, and there was an event in June at Leslie University where our students were awarded, you know, were recognized for graduating. At the end of that, of the last school year, there were some changes among the member districts here. Lexington had decided prior to the end of the school year that they were going to withdraw and not continue in the program past the end of last school year. And over the summer, Andover reached the same conclusion. They withdrew from the program. So that left Brookline and Arlington, which was, made it impossible for the organization nationally to fund a program manager to run the program here in our area. And because of that uncertainty and not having the stability of the program, we didn't recruit a new cohort of students, and neither did Brookline. So we have one student who was remaining from last year who was now a senior, and Brookline had a few students who remained. And so we've been trying to figure out what we're going to do going forward for the students who remain in the program and in the future if we're going to continue. On Tuesday, Dr. Bodie and I had a conference call with Dr. Betty Perkins, who is the founder and executive director of TSTT, and her husband. They are interested in resuming a cohort in a region here next year. They've been reaching out to dis- They've been reaching out to districts nearby, like Waltham and Medford and some others, about joining, and they're hopeful that they and other districts nearby will join. A lot of this is dependent on the district's budget process. Like us, everyone's in budget season and trying to figure out what makes it into the budget. This program does cost the district $3,000 per student per year. So depending on how many students we have, it's, that's how much we pay. And the goal of the program, and the way it works in a lot of the, in Westchester County, where it's really, where it was started, and where there's several school districts that are very involved in it, they have a cohort in every class in the high school. So you could have a school with 20 to 25 students, and you're paying $3,000 each. Some of those schools have sponsors, they have corporate sponsors in New York that are paying for some of that, which we have not had here. So we're looking at if these other districts do join, and we can develop a cohort of 40 to 50 students in our general region, which would probably take five to eight school districts to do, then we, Dr. Bodie and I talked to Dr. Perkins, that we would continue, we'd come back into the program, try to recruit students for next year, who would be underclassmen, freshmen, maybe sophomores at the high school here, and start again. As you know, we're involved in the Mass Partnership for Diversity in Education. We're a member district. Regina Keynes, who is the director of that organization, has been very vocal in her support of TSTT, and has spoken to the member districts, MPDE, to try to get some interest in TSTT through those districts. And perhaps some of those districts will come on board. It's a little uncertain right now. I think we do need to have, get other districts on board. Brookline is also in a little bit of a transition right now, because they're going through a superintendent search. They have a new human resources director. So the people who were involved in the program when Brookline, in Brookline, when it was created there, are not there anymore, other than the teachers who have still been involved. So that's really where we are. We're sort of in a, in a sort of a lull this year with the program, and mostly, you know, because of the uncertainty of the program here in our district, in our region. We weren't able to gain new districts until last year. Boston was talking about starting, but that kind of fell through. Worcester had their own thing going, and I don't think that's going to continue in the same way anymore after this year. So it's a little bit, it's been tougher for this program to get traction in Massachusetts. And so we're sort of beholden to what other districts we can get involved, because we do need other towns, other school districts in our general area to be involved, for us to be involved, for it to make worthwhile, to be worthwhile, to engage a program manager who's going to work with the districts in really running an effective program here. I don't know if Kathy has anything to...
Great summary.
Mr. Heiner?
First off, I don't know if you remember, I was fortunate enough to represent us at that graduation program at Leslie last year, and it was, seeing the young students, it was phenomenal. I valued this program. Couple of questions for you. That $3,000, how much of that goes to the national?
So we, we send it to the national. So every, the $3,000 goes to the national. What they do with the money is they pay a regional program manager, they create curriculum, they obviously have overhead at their region, at their national office, which is in White Plains, New York. So they, it's, you know, it's part of the organizational expenses.
Second question. They don't have a copyright. I mean, what would it take for us to consider doing it on our own?
So there are...
Dealing with the, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the biggest part is money, second, having that director do the organization part. Could you prioritize? Is it money first, would you say?
I think it's money.
Looking at $12,000 for a student that comes in the freshman year, going through the whole program.
I think it's money and time. So each school district also has a teacher mentor. And we have had a teacher mentor here, Melanie Constandakis, who's a social studies teacher here at the high school, who's done a great job as a teacher mentor for our students here at the high school. They, the teacher mentor gets a stipend actually directly from TSTT program. It's not through our contract, it's through the TSTT program. And so they get a little stipend to work with the students, but it's not enough to make it, and they don't have time or capacity. We'd have to, we'd have to sort of create a part-time position to allow them to do that in Arlington and release them from some of the teaching duties. So there would be an expense to that, to make it worthwhile.
I didn't know if we could start our own, just a thought, a smaller consortium of several towns. From what I've heard, because I've been active in this with the others, the dissatisfaction is the support of the major chapter, because we had, correct me if I'm wrong, did we ever have a full-time director?
We never had a full-time director in our region, because we didn't have enough students to support it.
Right, and we had several directors going in and out of this?
Over the course of the four years, we had three or four directors, yeah.
Okay, so there's a factor of consistency and stuff like that. I'm not trying to add more work or stuff like that, but to me, the program is worth it. If we can make it survive, if we have to possibly be creative, it's easy for me to say this, and hard to go through, but that's part of it. And so, just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I'm not sure the cost, I mean, I think it would require a part-time position to run the program effectively.
We've never investigated, and I'm not putting any blame on this, on anyone, never investigated corporate sponsors in the area, have we?
Well, we have not. That would be the role of the director. But the issue of having other districts and having a director is that it's, there are programs that they attend. And so it's organizing these educational programs. There's certainly things they do in district. But that would be, I think that would not be really realistic in terms of what we could possibly reach out to. It would need this outside organization, and we support them, and I will certainly talk with any superintendents that they have interest in this program. But I think without TSTT, organizing all the programmatic pieces of this, we just simply don't have the personnel to do that.
I just got the feeling that the support, because we did not have a full-time director, was there all the time. I spoke to several, two of the part-timers, and they would be getting information late. Some of the programs, the students had already committed to something else. It was very frustrating. The concept of the program is phenomenal, and there was a degree of frustration. That's where I'm coming from, that's all.
There, I've heard that too. And I think one of the other issues that can be, the program is demanding, it's a rigorous curriculum, that the TSTT, they have their curriculum that they set up. They have a lot of expectations for the students to do internships and tutoring and things like that. And when you have students like we do in Arlington, and a lot of the other districts do too, who are involved in athletics and clubs and part-time jobs and whatever, it's very difficult to fit it all in. I mean, as you know, our students are extended in this high school, and many high schools in Massachusetts, and have a lot going on. And it's another thing that is very useful and helpful, but it's just hard to get it all in.
If I may, just one more. The benefit of one of the students that finished the program would, in the next four years at Leslie, was going to cost that student something like $2,500 a year, including books, tuition, and room and board. Scholarships through Barnes and Noble, I mean, the main program has a lot of connections and stuff, so extremely beneficial for these young people. They earned it. They earned every bit of it. But I was just astounded at what these people were gaining and the work they did.
The one other thing that is a challenge for the students, I mean, one of the things that the program does is it has college partnerships. And so, as you were saying, the students can get a very good, at least 50% off tuition primarily, or 50% scholarship for the colleges that are partners with TSTT. The only local college that was really a partner was Leslie University, and that's been a recent development. I think they've talked to other colleges around here to try to add them. The limitation of the colleges, there's more in the New York area, and some other in Westchester County and other upstate New York, but not as, if that would increase, that would help too. And a lot of our students are, there's other sources that they're getting college funding from.
Dr. Seuss?
Oh, I'm very sad to hear this, and I just have to say that it just sounded like such a fabulous program. And I hope that things work out, that we can restart in the future.
Okay, anything else? Nope. Vote for approval, second read of the 2016, 2017 Arlington Public Schools calendar. Dr. Bodie? We have a calendar before us, right?
You have a calendar before you. Essentially, this calendar identifies what the start date is of the school year, major vacations, major holidays, of course, the early release time we have on Tuesdays for elementary. So pretty much all of the essential information is in this calendar. What it does not have right now is perhaps your approval on what the dates are for the school committee meetings, because we just put them in based on the policy, which sometimes, given other conflicts, those dates get changed around a bit. And also, we don't have parent conferences on here at any of the levels, or if there are early release days at the secondary level. We will be able to have that information by the end of the school year, which we did last year. And so we'll do an updated calendar at that time. But I think parents are very, would like very much to know what the key times are for next year. And our hope is that we're going to be able to do that for, say, the next two years after that. I know the community relations committee, subcommittee, and the AEA are going to do a joint survey, just to get a sense from parents of some issues around the start time, and maybe some other things that they're going to talk about. Because I would, I think it'd be helpful, parents, before the end of this school year, to know the opening school date for 2017 and 2018, if we can do that. Obviously, there'll be incomplete calendars, but it's getting the key times in there.
Mr. Heiner?
I would ask the superintendent to ask all the principals and stuff, programs such as the one that's going on in the lower auditorium right now, not be scheduled for Thursday night, unless it's an absolute emergency. There are too many programs, I think, that would be, it's very important for members of the school committee to have a presence. And a lot of them have fallen on Thursday. Tonight is one that I truly wanted to go to. I asked if it was going to be videotaped, but it's not the same thing. So I would ask going forward, I mean, there was some talk of changing the night. I think the, I don't know which is easier, for us to change our night, or for programs not to be scheduled on the night that we're meeting. That's what I'd ask you to do going forward, please.
Well, I certainly will. And I, sometimes it has to do with when the speaker can come. There's a lot of other factors involved. And also, when we've had some actual school events, whether they be parent conferences, the preference is clearly to have it more toward the end of the week, because when teachers have a long day of teaching and are out in the evening, it's better when it's toward the end of the week rather than the beginning of the week. So those are some issues that have always been...
That maybe the conversation needs to go forward, changing on night. I don't know.
Well, we've already referred that to policies and procedures, but seeing that we meet twice a month...
I don't see, I don't see it's going to happen in this calendar, so that's why I'm ahead. But going forward to the discussion...
Well, the problem with the conferences is that we have very few options for school committee meetings in December, and very few Thursdays. And so, to the extent that we can schedule around the committee meetings, which is helpful then to get them on the calendar, we'll certainly try to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Thielman?
So I'm going to move approval of the calendar, with the understanding that it's going to be amended with...
Filled in.
Filled in, rather, filled in. But this gives parents the start date and the end date for the year.
Second?
A second by Ms. Starks, Dr. Allison Appi.
I don't have anything on the current calendar, but I'm very glad to hear that we're talking about getting the next calendars set earlier, because we've been talking about doing that for years, and we really need to do it. It messes people up.
Any other discussion on the motion? Dr. Seuss?
Oh, just to clarify, so we still have the option in the future calendars, not this year, of course, of changing the date if we vote to...
No, we can, no, we can change it.
Changing the date of the school committee meeting.
We can even change it this year, yeah.
We can do whatever.
School committee meetings aren't set.
Okay.
Yeah, our policy allows us to set them on, our policy allows us to choose the Thursdays that they will be on. And if we want to amend our policy to remove either 6:30 or Thursday, we may do that. And that is before the policies and procedures committee...
That's separate from this, so this is just...
No, we approve this as is, and we don't commit to ourselves.
We're not committing to anything.
Great, okay.
Start and the end.
And the early releases and stuff.
Yeah, the early releases are set too, but that could change if, if you change the PD calendar, professional development, right?
I think we're going to try to keep those in place, right?
Well, next year, I mean, the professional day? That absolutely has to be on the day of the presidential election.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, you should, there's an agreement we have with the clerk's office, that when we have major elections, that would be our PD day, because it's just, it works out better because there's so many people that are coming to the schools.
But I think the calendar will be filled in with more information after we approve it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous vote, thank you. Next will be fiscal '17 budget. What are Arlington Public Schools priorities? Superintendent?
You were, when we first began this discussion of the budget, you've heard from principals, and we've certainly had a number of meetings with administrators, looking at what are the essential things that we need for our school district to provide the services that this community has expected of our schools. And we shared with you a list that totaled about $3.8 million. Of that, we were able to see that in terms of our past formula for going forward, that we would probably have $500,000 that we could put toward that amount, bringing it down to roughly $3.3. Since then, we've been given the number by the town manager, and in fact, this evening we do need a vote on that number going forward. So that is one thing that will happen, and I believe that we have the motion and the number for that.
I have the number.
Yeah, okay. Well, we can get to that in a minute. But we have spent some time over the last couple of weeks since we were given that number, and what we would take of that list, and what we would say would be, from our point of view, from the administrator's point of view, and teachers' point of view, I would also say that we would put forward to come to the dollar amount, which basically comes to about $1.5 million. Of that $1.5 million, 500 of that is the money that we would have from the formula for town appropriation. 250 of that would be from our revolving accounts, and then the remaining amount of money is part of the change in the formula for next year, that goes to the 35% of per pupil for enrollment growth, and that differential between our current formula, which is 25%, and 35%, 10% over the last three years. So essentially, it's in the neighborhood of about $950,000. So we have given you what we think are the priorities for that. Ms. Johnson has been working on preparing the budget documents for you, and that has to go to the printer tomorrow, so you have it next week. But this is the opportunity now, and over the next couple of meetings, to have some discussion about those, to see if there are different priorities that you might have as a committee. So that's one of the beginning discussions. What will come from this meeting, however, will not be reflected in any documents that have to go out tomorrow, pretty much, because that's all has to do with, it's already pretty much there to go to the printer. We did get some very unexpected and good news today, however. I was at the mid-year conferences with superintendents this morning, and Commissioner Chester announced that something that none of us knew about, that the governor was proposing a way to encourage more districts to have a full-time kindergarten without fees, and has proposed that districts that have that would be given $350 per student, that would be used supplementary. It would, we could not supplant anything, working pretty much like how Title I works. So it'd be supplementary. And if that does happen, we would be very close, about $20,000 to $30,000 shy of what it would take to have full-time teaching assistance in the kindergartens. So we won't know that until the budget's finally passed, but I heard about it, and we immediately, Julie Dunn immediately called the Department of Education. We were the first district to call, to find out, is this really true? And apparently so. And apparently so. It's a different kindergarten grant extension than what we previously had had. So, it's an entirely different initiative, which is supplanting the old version. So, that was a piece of good news. And the other is that we would have a little bit more in the way of Chapter 70, not a lot. And I believe that you think that that would come to about.
I heard about $120,000 thrown around. I mean, I would hope that we'll use it to fund reserve positions.
Yeah.
I.
No, you don't. This is all very new information since you, since that was put into your Nova's box.
I would just say that the Chapter 70 increase was paltry. And I think, the first thing I did when I saw those numbers is I called the governor's office to complain and then called the rep and the senators to complain as well. And I, you know, it sort of puts us in a peculiar position in that we do have two reps and a senator who are very solid behind us. But one of the really important things to have up on Beacon Hill is their ability to hold a stack of phone messages of outrage from their constituents over this Chapter 70 change. And the Foundation Budget Review Commission talked about how underfunded the foundation budget was. And so, now we have a governor who inflates it at negative .022%. So, he's cutting the foundation budget rather than increasing it. So, it's leaving us with about a 1.5% increase in our Chapter 70, actually, it's a 1% increase in the Chapter 78 with a 1.5% increase in students. And it's totally unjustifiable. And I think that anyone within the sound of this voice, our union friends, our parents, needs to call, make three phone calls tomorrow. One to the governor's office and one to their representative, either Mr. Garbly or Mr. Rogers, and fill their phone messages with complaints about the disinvestment. Because what's going on here, and I'm sorry, I shouldn't be talking like this, but it's egregious that the state has the ability to raise revenues, but they've taken it off the table and they've taken away our ability to raise any kind of revenues locally. Massachusetts municipalities are the most restricted municipalities in the nation in terms of their ability to raise revenue locally. So, all the state is doing with this budget or all the governor is, because the legislature hasn't adopted it, is proposing to pass the problem on to local school districts. And that's irresponsible to go and balance your budget on the, turn the problem over to somebody else. And I think it's egregious. Mr. Heiner.
Dr. Bodie, why are we voting tonight? And what is it exactly we're voting that you're asking us to vote on? The number that the town has gave us last week?
Appropriations, yes.
At a later date, can we raise it after we vote?
Can we raise it?
Is this, is this, this vote tonight, does it lock us into that number?
It's accepting the number.
I have a little bit of a concern, if I may.
Go right ahead.
I have a concern about that because in the budget meeting that we had yesterday, the idea was the initial budget is your budget, we're formulating our budget. It sounds like we're adopting the budget or we're going to have to take cuts within it and be restrained by the top money. And I'm a little bit nervous of that. What happens if we don't accept it tonight? I'm not saying we're not going to accept it. But what happens if we don't accept it tonight, anything? This isn't the mandatory acceptance of the budget, that we have a certain date that we have to accept the budget prior to town meeting. I'm just concerned that this puts restraints on the committee to increase if we, if we come to a consensus to increase. I'm not saying that we're going to, but I'm just nervous about that.
Well, this is the number that has emerged from long-range planning in terms of what would seem to be a reasonable number going forward. I think that, putting this in context, I think everyone acknowledges that we are going to be going to the voters for debt exclusion overrides on a number of projects, which one, which I will talk about tonight, the high school. And we are also looking down the road at an operating override. The town has been, has been, done an excellent job in being able to take the past override and have it extend many years. And part of that ability was actually through the employees of the town agreeing to go into GIC plus some additional monies that came through the budget process at the state. But we are, that is not going to go on indefinitely. And so, when they're looking at the money that we would use for operating budgets for up through the next three years or whatever number of years, they want to do it with the eye toward what is a reasonable operating override.
I understand that and I appreciate all the work that's been done by you, Ms. Johnson, and the Long Range Planning Committee and everything. But in the budget process that we're going through, we're doing outreach right now to the, each of the schools and stuff. And part of that is to ask parents and different groups to communicate with us their needs and their priorities. By voting this tonight, my concern is those meetings are fairly hollow other than if a parent, a group of parents say, we would like you to increase this or we'd like you to support this. It means we then, or you, have to cut something out if we make that a priority. And not that it would be 100% funded, but it makes it, to me, just an act of futility in my mind. That's all I'm saying.
Please.
Procedurally? All right, no, okay. Oh, you're just saying procedurally, you asked me what this would mean. The only way that that number, that bottom-line number would change would be if the Finance Committee recommended a different number to town meeting or the committee went to town meeting and asked for more money.
Ms. Starks.
Yeah, so I think that we're not voting the buckets, we're just voting the number. Like we always do every January, we have to vote to accept the final number. This is the final number.
This is a lot earlier than we normally do.
No, no, this is not.
At the end of January?
Yes, always, yeah.
Just meeting of January.
Okay. Again.
Can we not engage in cross-talk?
You're right.
Mr. Thielman.
I think we have to vote to accept the number tonight. And I'm trying to understand, are we going to go, do you want to talk about the cuts?
We have questions.
Or should we make a motion to get the number? Do you want to get that done first?
I, we can have a motion before us to vote the number.
Okay.
But the discussion can go into the impact of it so that our debate on whether or not to approve that motion to accept the number that's been offered to us can be informed by the discussion.
And I'll put the motion on the table, it'll be a second, then I'll ask questions.
I'll second it.
Okay. So, I move, what's the number that we accept?
The number is the total. Fifty.
Mr. Thielman? Oh, you're going to read it, you might as well have it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good point.
So, I move that the school committee accepts the following allocation from the town for our budget for fiscal year '17.
And a second by Mr. Heiner. And Mr. Thielman, continue, followed by the Chair of the Budget Subcommittee.
Oh.
Go ahead, Mr. Thielman.
Is that okay?
Continue, you made the motion.
Yeah, okay. So, I just, so I'm going, I went through the list of the cuts and the document is titled Color-Coded FY '17. So, I'm looking at FY '17 Color-Coded Ask Cuts for, Ask Cuts for '17. Okay. So, I see under Addison Teachers, a cut in one teacher, SLCB, SLCB Teaching Assistance. So, what's the, so are we, what's the plan for SLC given these cuts at the Addison?
Can I defer this over to Ms. Elmer?
We would not be increasing staff and they would stay with their existing staff.
And so, how many SLC classrooms would it?
So, the model at the middle school is a little bit different than the model at the elementary school.
Okay.
So, it's not a completely sub-separate where it's a classroom a day. The students go there for periods throughout the day. There's currently a special education teacher, two TAs, third career professionals, and a licensed social worker.
So, what would the, what's the impact going to be on that change? And from what we asked?
If there are program referrals, obviously, the class size during those periods will increase. The social work will have a larger caseload.
Okay.
All the collateral work that you do around these students who have social motion needs or if they're not certified, it would increase on two individuals that we currently have.
Next area under the elementary cuts, and that's Stratton, Hardy, Bishop District-wide teaching, there's Stratton, Hardy, Bishop Teachers. And they were, one was an ELL, two were ELL teachers and one was a reading specialist. What's the, could someone just describe the impact of that?
We would have a larger number of students that have to be serviced by the ELL teachers. One of the things that we are looking at, particularly at Hardy, is whether we, if we have other elementary teachers that are hired and the same thing at Thompson, to see if we can obtain dual-certified teachers so that those students, you know, that would help us with managing the caseload in terms of the ELL. In terms of the reading specialist, we do currently have a situation where we have to prioritize the students that receive reading services. We are currently not able to service all the students that we might like to have reading services and this will increase that to some degree.
Thank you. Addison, World Language, Spanish, French, one FTE, or, I'm sorry, .8 FTE. That means that, does that mean it's larger class sizes or not offering, what's the trade-off?
Certainly, larger class sizes. But, you know, Dr. Bodie has a policy at the high school regarding the minimum number of students that are necessary for, to be in a course in order to run it.
This is middle school.
I understand. I was going to just say that we're going to probably have to use the same kind of guidelines.
I got it.
Similar guidelines at the middle school.
Okay.
I will add one more thing. One of the constraints we've had with World Language at the middle school this year is the size of the classrooms they've been in.
Yeah.
And we're probably going, which constrains the number of students. So, class sizes will rise, but it's also going to mean that some classes are going to have to move to other rooms and have more traveling for World Language teachers.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you. And the one thing I did want to point out is, I think I got this right, the science kits, that's saved. That didn't get.
Yes. We're going to do.
Yeah, the materials are all the same.
We're going to take that out of revolving money. So, that's a one-time expense, yeah.
Okay. And out of the revolving reserve fund?
Right now, we're taking, planning to take $250,000.
Okay. So, the one, so that's a good thing in some respects. Another thing, and in other respect, it's a little dangerous because then we get, we get used to that.
That's a concern. There are certainly expenses that come up that are unexpected.
Yeah.
The elevator is a good example of that.
Yeah.
Because there are certain things that we're going to have to fund. One could argue, so what is the right percentage to have in, keeping your revolving accounts with a budget this size, the number of students we have? And frankly, I think we're, we're concerned, we're fine with the numbers we have right now. To have no reserves is not good prudent management of a school district this size. It's just not. And so, having something in the order of 2% I think is a reasonable number.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay. Dr. Allison Apie.
Okay, so, I'm sorry I wasn't here last time and I'm behind on meetings and I'm still playing catch-up and also, I'm not 100%, but I'm doing my best. First, when we have voted before on this, what we have phrased it as, at least in the recent past, is we acknowledge the number that we were given.
Acknowledge. So, I'll take the friendly amendment. Instead of accept, acknowledge.
Yes. Because certainly, it sits better with us. So, the second thing is, we did have, we had a meeting yesterday with the Budget Subcommittee. One of the things that we brought up was whether we, we had heard about the town's funding and the numbers that were coming down. And so, one of the obvious questions is, do, as Mr. Heiner was saying, do we just accept it or do we keep pushing back? And what I found was that the Budget Subcommittee itself was very divided and I didn't feel that we could come to a resolution. So, we don't bring forward anything in terms of a specific recommendation, either accept or not. I felt it was better just to have us all make our own statements about what we thought. I'll wait and get back to what my thinking is on this. So, the, that's really what it comes down to is whether we acknowledge and accept the number or whether we try and push forward. There really isn't much precedent for us pushing forward. In fact, there wasn't really precedent for us pushing what we did. So, it's hard to say how will it fit into budgets and things. You know, clearly, budgets are still flexible. I mean, things are being decided until town meeting. But there are so many other balls in the air also and we were having to look and think about all of these things at the same time and pick what is the best option for all of them. And it gets very complicated. I appreciate that you were eliciting the feedback on what the meaning is of not having these things as we communicate out to parents. We will bring some of this information to them. To speak to Mr. Heiner's point about, well, what's the point in going and talking to parents? Part of what we're doing, budgeting is always a zero-sum game. It's figuring out what parts, within that zero-sum, what parts do we keep and what parts do we shrink and what parts do we grow? And what we're trying to hear from the parents is our thinking, is our thinking in line with what their desires are? And so, I don't feel that there is no reason to go talk to people if we've already accepted a bottom-line number. And just to clarify, as we were having sort of side talk, this is the usual, actually, the last meeting was the one that we normally acknowledge the number and it's always in way in advance of our budgeting. And part of that's because of the way the town does it with the long-range plan and going forward, I think in other situations, it may be somewhat different. But I think it is important for us to continue going forward and collecting information from parents. But also, I had asked last, for last meeting, to gather school committee's thoughts on what priorities were and I think that message got kind of garbled. So, we are still interested in hearing what you folks are thinking or what you're hearing from people so that we can go forward and look at what decisions are and think about them in that light. Am I done?
Ms. Starks is next.
I had a bunch of questions. My first question was, I assume that the increase, early childhood asked for two TAs and they're getting three. I assume that's because they're not getting the teacher, okay? And then, initially, in the, I noticed that we only had one reserved teaching position, but in this new one that's available tonight, the color-coded one, we have two reserved teachers.
Dr. Bodie.
I don't know how that changed.
We have one unless you put in the, you put the two in because of the Chapter 70.
Oh, that, I wondered where it came from.
Reduce the professional, the last of the professional.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, alright.
They had a, they had a um, a meeting about this. This has really been go.
Oh, no, I know.
Yeah, we, we felt, yeah, we, we're feeling very uncomfortable with the number of reserve positions, as you can well understand. This last year, we had eight.
Yes, that's why I was concerned.
Yeah.
Because we initially had asked for five, then it was cut back to one, but now I see it's back up to two, which I feel a little bit more comfortable with. But I just wondered where that came from and that.
If I could, it's two on top of the two that we've automatically allocated to Thompson to staff the two new counselors.
Right, right, right.
So it's actually four adds.
Well, we also have allocated one to Hardy.
One of those two reserves.
One of.
One of the two reserve ones?
At least one, yeah. We have, uh, we're gonna need, we're going to need one or possibly two teachers at Hardy next year. The second teacher will depend upon what happens with kindergarten enrollment.
Okay. Alright, so that's what those are for?
Yes, but we put the two for Thompson.
So nothing here for PE?
For PE?
Yes.
No.
They asked for more PE.
The Odysseum yours.
Yeah, we have that at Odysseum.
Not the Odysseum, no, the elementary school. The problem is the overcrowding in the elementary school PE classes, okay? Um, the other question I have is, translation asked for ten thousand, so you gave them eleven thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine.
That was to hit the mu, the number exactly.
Ah, okay.
In addition, that's actually kinda low.
It's way low, anyway, but.
Okay.
I was, I needed something to tie us out.
Okay. Um, and then I wondered, you, I'm excited that we're gonna put another nurse at the Odysseum, given the number of kids there. Um, and I just, I noticed that their original ask was for sixty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars, but we're only giving them fifty-four thousand, but we're still keeping the FTE the same. Do we just find a cheaper nurse?
Well, that's exactly what happened. Um, Director Frankie told us that she could find somebody for that price, and so we lowered the amount.
Good, 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 alright, excellent. Um, I mean, of course, I feel, just like everyone else, I have, I'm sure that, I mean, it's heart-wrenching, the stuff that we can't do. But, I mean, I understand that the decisions that had to be made, I don't think that I could make them any differently. So I just wanted to make sure I understood what this does. Thanks.
Pierce.
Thank you. Um, was one of the considerations, the amount of Xs in the four columns on the left? If there, if there were four Xs, that, that would get the funding before the.
More X's.
Equals more, more dollars. Okay. One of the, one of the things that I'm concerned about with the Common Core, you know, is that the teachers' professional development at Common Core is getting not funded at all, support for Common Core implementation. And we're also, the elementary math coach and the reading, um, is, is, uh, for example, the elementary math coach is point two instead of one point six. If we're not gonna have the teachers having their professional development, and we're not gonna have the coaches that we need, it, it, you know, and we're switching to a test that is all Common Core, it just seems like something's gonna not be right in that equation. So I just wanna know.
Well, I can have Dr. Chetson chime in on this too, but I will say, we've been doing a lot of work on Common Core. Professional development is an extremely important investment that we make in our teachers, 'cause it, 'cause that's how our students benefit. Um, as we go forward with this, we're, we'll hope that they'll be able to offer more. The thing to remember about a budget is that it's a blueprint. It's, it's not exact to the dollars, 'cause you can't do it until you go through. And that's what you see in the actuals the year goes on. So we're hoping that, um, as we actually hire and we, we live with some of this, we'll be able to do, to do that. 'Cause we share your value. It is extremely important. And a lot of the curriculum development work and, and professional development occurs in the summer. And, um, so we're gonna have to set a dollar number for the summer and have to live with whatever that's gonna be. It might be certainly less than we've seen the last few summers, unfortunately.
Do I have time for another?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, in terms of curriculum, hard paper and books, and, and we were told we needed to update.
Yeah.
I, I, just as a sort of layperson, I, I value bodies over books, and I value old books to, to hiring a, a new body. I, I just, what, what placement, what importance do you put on that, um, priority? In terms of, can you get by with older materials so that you can get that extra math coach or that extra teacher?
If I, if I may, um, I think that at the middle school, we've been doing that. We've been doing it for twenty years, as you heard when they came to speak. I think it's time that we, that we say we've gotten every dime out of this that we possibly could have. Um, I think also at the elementary school, we're asking teachers to teach Common Core in math, in literacy, in science, in social studies. Without the appropriate materials, I mean, we're already asking way too much of them, but without the appropriate materials, that's, I mean, that's almost like, you know, breaking the horse's leg before it comes out of the starting blocks. I mean, it just, it just cannot, it can't happen. So we need to have those materials so the teachers at least have a framework to follow when they are able to do it. Um, particularly in the, the compressed school day that we have. Um, there's just no way that without those materials, would, they need a roadmap to, to see where they're going. So we really looked and, and only funded those that we absolutely needed. And so those would be cur- um, curriculum materials that are Common Core-based at the elementary school. And at the middle school, we finally had to say, you know, if the countries have changed five times since we put out this textbook, I really think that we. And, and I know I'm being sarcastic, and I apologize, but, but I'm, I'm just trying to emphasize that things have changed in the last twenty years, and we, we just really.
There's nothing with working with the companies to say, it's like leases of subscription to Windows or Microsoft. Like, everyone has to have a lease number, right? Like, they can't borrow their cohort teachers.
Actually, we only get, um, one set of classroom books now, and we get digital copies for students to make use of at home. So we do not buy a textbook for student, for each student anymore. We haven't done that in a really long time.
The other issue, um, is substituting curriculum materials or a, a person for the curriculum materials. We're gonna be funding the curriculum materials out of revolving account money. And I think it's not good budgeting to count on a, a position to be funded from the get-go out of that.
Yeah.
Certainly what has happened in past years is we've sometimes gone to the reserve. Um, and it's not really, it's not, we can call them reserve, but they're revolving accounts, um, that in some cases are not entirely earmarked. That we've had to pick up a point two or something in those. But that, from, at this point in the process, to budget out for, it's not part of the base then. So I think for one-time expenses, this is a, a very appropriate use of that money.
Thank you. Dr. Seuss.
Uh, so I just have two questions in the statement. So just a clarification about numbers. The kindergarten new proposal by the governor, and we recognize that the governor's budget is only a starting point. And that actually budgets originate from the legislature. It may look very different eventually. But how does that number for the kindergarten program compare to the amount that we were previously getting? I mean, it looks like we have about five hundred students, about a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Does that seem right?
It's pretty comparable to the kindergarten grant for this year.
Right, and so, um, so we, you know, previously from that amount, we were only funding a halftime TA. So we would be adding to our budget, you know.
Let's see, what happened is that when we were deciding what would be put into the base budget, was we, we, we could've said, because the grant went away. And this is actually how we've handled grants in the past. When a grant has gone away, then that, those positions go away. But we felt that, very strongly, and felt that, we, you know, not to have at least a halftime TA. So we didn't put it in the add part. We could've done it that way. So now that we have done it this way, if the money comes out in the grant program the way we've done it, it's for, it can't, it can't supplant what you've already budgeted.
Okay, good, okay.
So in some ways, by making that decision early on, we've, we created a situation where it could.
Feels like extra.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright, the other question I have about numbers is the, um, the chapter seventy increase. So the hundred and twenty thousand is less than the hundred and seventy thousand that Adam was accounting for in his budget. So do, do we then not get that amount? We don't, we only get anything above a hundred and seventy thousand.
A hundred and twenty-six, I believe, and I believe this is above that number, but we don't know that for a fact yet.
Is that sound right? It's, uh, I, I thought we were, the increase sounded like it was below what Adam was expecting, so we wouldn't get any of it, under the current proposal. Is that?
No, uh, the, the agreement was regardless of what the chapter seventy was, we would get the funding, so, uh, through the.
No, no. Agreement is, it had to, if it was above.
But, but if the number came in above a certain number, we would get that, yeah.
Yeah, a hundred and seventy thousand, right. But a hundred and twenty's below a hundred and seventy, that's what I'm wondering about.
Yeah.
Is the hundred and twenty already, is there somehow the hundred and seventy increase, a hundred and twenty's on top of it?
No.
Or is it below it, and so we don't get that money under the governor's proposal?
Dr. Allison Ampe.
Can I read what he wrote in his budget?
You go right ahead.
Um, in addition to this significant increase, this budget recommendation further proposes that any increase in chapter seventy-eight above what is currently estimated, which is one hundred and twenty-six thousand, be provided to the school department.
Okay.
So we'd only get any, and the number.
'Cause we just, there was just sort of a comment about the hundred and twenty being something we could put into reserves, and it sounds like.
If we get it.
We don't have it.
It's not in the budget.
Yeah, but it sounds like, it sounds like even if we, even if, so suppose today, the governor's budget passed, then according to the agreement that, according to what Adam's proposal is, we don't get any extra money.
No, right.
Okay, that's what, that's what I thought. So we can't put anything in reserves, 'cause we don't get, we don't have anything extra necessarily.
We don't have the money yet, so it's not any part of the budget.
No, no, I know, but even in the budget, even in the budget, it's not.
It's not in here.
Okay, okay, so that was a question. Um, so, and then I just have a statement, and I, I'm sorry to take up your time, but, um, just to point out how constrained we are year after year. Um, we, um, our per pupil spending is less than the state's average. Our per pupil spending is less than the comp, the towns to which we compare ourselves. And the towns to which we compare ourselves to is not Lexington and not Newton. I mean, we're way below that. We're talking about much lower than places like Belmont and other places, I have the list over here. But, um, we are, um, number eight in terms of, you know, if you list the towns from one to twelve, we're number eight. So we are constantly constrained. Um, this year is no different. Um, the town is also constrained, and I, I feel for the needle to which Adam has to thread, the thread, or whatever. Threading the needle is a very, very difficult thing. I think that we, as a town, need to have a conversation about what we want our town to look like and what we want our tax base to look like. Um, nobody likes taxes, but, but we need to figure out what kind of services, education otherwise, we want to provide to our citizens and what that's gonna look like in terms of the town, the tax base. And, um, I hope that in the context of the enrollment discussions and the possible debt exclusion and the possible operating override, that that conversation happens and that we really go to the voters and ask them, what do you want?
Thank you. Mr. Heiner.
I'm deeply concerned about the, the cuts on the special education, especially at Odysseum and the high school. When the presentation was done, uh, by the high school directors, they emphasized the, the need for these positions, for high needs in math, science, and English, to maintain that level-one school. That's the spot, the high-needs students, where the, the, the one and two, even the low ones, that's really where we get hit. The high school seems to get hit real hard in this whole budget. Maybe their, their asks and their dreams were higher than everyone else. I'm an elementary teacher, and I value everything. I am deeply concerned about the special education, and I would ask everybody, bottom line, if things, we vote a number. You folks take that number, and you, you, there's possibilities you're gonna make changes and stuff throughout the year for the needs. I pride myself in saying I'm a member of a school committee that has a, a level-one high school. And, uh, all the programs at the high school make it a pristine high school. The building doesn't make it. It's quite obvious that we're, we're producing phenomenal graduates in spite of the facility. Thank you.
I, 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 my comments are just two very brief ones. I'm very concerned about the cuts to ELL positions. ELL parents are not the ones that come out here and squawk. Those kids need advocates, and we should be their advocates. Uh, I also note that where we do not have level-one schools, our, our shortfall is for high-needs students. And to be cutting funding for positions to address the needs of high-needs students, I have tremendous difficulty with. The other thing I would note as a town meeting member since nineteen ninety-two, ninety-something like that, and somebody who's been involved in the town side as well as the school side, since this last override, I've noticed absolutely no erosion of services or angst about cuts in any other town area, but we're, we're being put through this. And I think there's something critically wrong with that picture. I think one of the things that we did, um, when we went for this override, is we said we would hold our property taxes and our spending to certain levels, but we'd also provide, uh, maintain the, the level of services that we were providing back when the override was voted. And with the increase in enrollment, uh, we're, we're not able to, to keep up with that. And we're not increasing the mileage of town roads, we're not increasing the, the number of homes on sewers appreciably. But we're having a significant annual increase in students which are yielding higher class sizes and reductions of services. And, and I've got a problem with that. I mean, if we're one town and we have to absorb cuts as a town, uh, they shouldn't all be on our side of the street. And, and that's where I stand. Uh, so I guess it's time to take a vote, and I'll do that as a roll call. Mr. Heiner?
No.
Uh, Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Allison Ampe?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Starks?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Seuss?
Yes.
Uh, the chair votes no, it's a five to two vote. Hmm? Uh, Dr. Allison Ampe.
Can I ask one more question about the color-code budget?
Yeah, quickly, uh.
Yeah, um, what is the athletics money for?
Um, if I may, the, um, the athletics department, um, was somewhat tumultuous before Melissa Dugalecki took over. And we needed some time to figure out exactly what she needed to run it. This one twenty-five basically funds what she has been spending. So it's not an increase to her budget, it's simply budgeting what she's been spending anyway. I've, you know, if you, when you see the budget book, you'll see that it's predominantly in the areas of transportation, which has shot up tremendously. The new transportation contract for athletics is very expensive, and ice time. I mean, those are the two big things that we're getting hit on.
Okay.
And as you see, her whole ask was her, having based on a couple of years of experience, what she needed to optimize the athletics budget and build and maintain the programs that she thinks the district really needs. And so that was the whole two hundred and forty-six thousand dollar ask. But the one twenty-five, I feel, is essential because the money's going out the door already. So we just need to be honest with ourselves about it.
Thank you.
Okay, now for the good news. Dr. Bodie, MSBA board decision regarding Arlington High.
Yes, it's a, it's absolutely a wonderful decision. Yesterday, I attended the board meeting, and the Massachusetts School Building Authority Board voted into the eligibility period twenty-six communities. Arlington High School was one of the communities. And there, we actually, a board member is a nineteen eighty-nine graduate, so he did make the comment.
Still looks the same.
Huh?
It still looks the same.
It still looks the same. Uh, he, he was very, very happy to see that Arlington High School was on the list. So what is happening, and I think adds a little bit of the confusion about this, is that the commencement of the eligibility period is going to be staggered. And they've never had such a big cohort coming in to, for budget, for, uh, different projects. So this is a way to, um, I think, just sort of space, space out the, um, the, the process. Because I put into your, um, into Novus, you have a schedule that you can see what has, what are the deliverables during the eligibility period, and there are very defined timelines for that. For example, um, you have the initial compliance certification, you have thirty days to get that done. That one's not particularly a tough one. But going down the list, for example, the educational profile questionnaire, that actually is a very important document. In fact, it's probably one of the most important documents of this entire, uh, list. Because they emphasized yesterday that your, your programmatic educational vision is what should dictate the building. And they take that very seriously, and they really want to see what you're thinking about. And they take that very seriously, and they really want to see what you're thinking about it, and, and what, it's not even just the high school, we're gonna have to be talking about the entire district, and I remember doing this with Thompson, and it took us a, a while to do it, because you have to be very clear, because then, later, you, you line up your, your, uh, building in terms of what the design is, uh, to that educational vision, so you have ninety days to complete that, and they, they can then, there's also a whole enrollment piece in this first, and that actually is going to be an issue. There's also another piece, a part of that enrollment which doesn't show up there, is that there are actually components of that, and, and people have asked me, well, when would we discuss whether the eighth grade would be part of a, a project later on, that's when you introduce the concept of a new, a new configuration. So there is a lot to all of what has to happen in this period of time. As you go through this process, if those members were on the board, on the school committee at the time, went through Thompson, there are a number of board votes as you go through this, so we'll have a feasibility vote, and then you have other votes going forward, um, in fact, when you saw the agenda yesterday, and I can actually give you a copy of it if you'd like, you can see all the different votes they did, you know, some people were going to feasibility, some people were getting repairs, there was just a, a lot of different, uh, different stages that people were in, but Arlington, I will make it very clear, Arlington has been invited into the eligibility, we are going forward with this project. Now, while we're not commencing right at the moment, that doesn't mean that there's not work that we can do, and it does not mean that we cannot, um, go forward at Springtown Meeting and, uh, look at allocation of money for feasibility study, which is part of this, this first module.
I, I want, I wanna point out that if you drive around and look at all the cars and the license plates, once upon a time, every registration expired at the end of the year, and you'd have to get a new plate in January first, and that became onerous for the Registry of Motor Vehicles, because they'd be swamped at the end of the year, so now that, uh, all the passenger plates are staggered over ten months based on the last digit of the plate, so they can stagger all the reregistrations, and essentially, the, uh, state's doing the same thing on these building projects, they have a limited staff, and they've got to stagger these out over the course of the year, so instead of having a, a, a one on our license plate, we'll probably have a five if we're voted in on May, so we're in the queue to get voted, it's just which, uh, last digit of the license plate we end up with, so, uh, the fact that Belmont got, uh, a one on their license plate, and we may get a five, is not a big deal, uh, we'll have the, the same, uh, process, and it'll give us, uh, a couple of extra months to beat the deadline on, on, uh, doing the first, uh, module, Mr. Heiner.
Without opening a major can of worms, when you do the enrollment, do you have to include the hundred and fifty-plus or one hundred and twenty-plus students that are at Minuteman, in case tomorrow they decide to come back here?
Well, that's a very good question, and that is something that will be part of all of that, yes, that's a very good question, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Thielman.
The, uh, two hundred and seventy-day period, that starts to run when?
The day you commence.
And what, when do we find out when our commencement?
Among, there were eight projects yesterday that were voted to commence their eligibility period, and it actually starts two weeks after the vote. So they will commence, and then they have to complete everything, now, that's the outside of when you have to complete it, you can complete that module in.
The day after.
Well, you could, technically.
So I just wanna clarify, they, that they have not voted to commence for us?
We have not voted to commence yet.
But we're commencing.
We are commencing.
I'm gonna be, there are certainly things I'm gonna be thinking about, all right, uh, and I think that, you know, it's, it's laid out here, what you have to do, so there's a lot of things that you can think about, you cannot give any deliverables until two weeks after you commence.
Okay, and could you just, um, when would you think, so the next, an action, are we gonna take any actions at this, at this year's town meeting? Are we gonna, any authorization?
I certainly hope so.
Uh, Dr. Allison Ampe.
We can start working on these things without getting in trouble with MSBA, if it's before we've commenced?
We're not going to be submitting anything, they're not gonna review them with us, um, whatever we do is just more or less our preparatory work, the, once you, you, for each one of these, you can be working with your project manager, we will get assigned a coordinator and a manager that, you know, there's, uh, there's a back and forth, I saw that with Thompson, uh, Mr. Thielman saw that with Thompson as well, but you don't even begin those discussions about any of this until you commence.
Uh, Dr. Seuss, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So we're not actually, I mean, we'll do some sort of groundwork stuff, but we're not actually starting to work on the module things until after we commence?
It's pre-commence, really.
We can do our homework, but we can't submit it.
No, but that's not what she's saying, she's saying she's not actually doing any, I mean, doing this stuff.
It's essentially, you can, you can, I, I know what the educational, um, questionnaire is going to be like, and it's certainly gonna be thinking about it, um, but once we commence, that has to be submitted within ninety days.
Right, no, I under, I understand that, it's just, they also have rules about what you can't be doing before, until you've entered the feasibility study or something, you can't decide on what your school looks like.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're not doing that.
No, I know, I know, I'm just saying, I don't know where all those rules are.
No, and in fact, when we went with Thompson, we had, um, we, we certainly came in with our preferred option, which was a new school, but we also had to come in with two other options, and that is part of what happens during the feasibility start, the feasibility part of the plan, because you're working at that point, cause between, after this, and you have to put your team together, which means you have to, uh, advertise for an owner's project manager, and then, of course, a design, designer, which is your architect, so you have gotta get your team in place, you don't even begin the feasibility study until you have your team in place.
No, I understand, I just.
But you probably, but a lot of people probably don't understand what the process is, yeah.
Uh, Dr. Seuss.
Oh, so I have more questions about the feasibility study, so we get the money potentially at town meeting in April, um, we can't commence gathering the team and doing a feasibility study until it commence, until two weeks afterwards. What would be sort of the time period that we could get, are the possible options sort of in front of MSBA, in front of people in the town, um, what is sort of the range of time, are we talking end of the summer? Are they talking, okay, we talking mid-fall, are we talking end of, of the winter? Like, just sort of a, a general range of, of what kind of time period we're looking at?
Maybe you could help me, what do you mean, options?
Well, so, so I understand the feasibility study, um, doesn't come up with three options that then is presented to MSBA, and they weigh heavily on which one they're gonna find, I mean, they choose which one they're gonna find. When, what timing, if we sort of worked our butts off, everything fell into place perfectly, what kind of timing would we be looking at to get those options before MSBA for them to vote on?
Oh, to get the options, oh, that part can take a while.
Okay.
In fact, that, that was what took us the longest with Thompson, the Thompson project, roughly speaking, from beginning to having a dedication was about four years.
Right, but what about the time where we was like, okay, this is the option we're choosing, we haven't done any thematic drawings of it, but this is.
That's gonna be, that will take months to do, and yes, there will be, um, components where we, we reach out to, there'll be a lot of community input into that, there will be a, a building committee that has formed under the, in very strict num, uh, roles that are, must be played in that, and then, once you, you, you don't really go out until you get your designer and your owner's project manager.
Okay, so just a general thing, like, winter of next, of, of two thousand and sixteen?
I don't think we would be going to actually delivering our three options until the, sometime in the school year seventeen, eighteen.
Okay.
Easily.
Okay, okay, that's what I wanted.
It's a much later module, Mr. Thielman.
So when the, when the school building committee is selected, that committee meets, and it's an open meeting, the options, because they impact the town are discussed, impact the entire town budget, are discussed by the capital planning committee, the board of selectmen, the school committee, the finance committee, we made presentations for the Thompson, to all those groups, they were all public meetings, and there were meetings with parents, so there's a lot of meetings that take place, there's a lot of input, and there's a lot of back and forth, and there's a, you know, there's a lot of people that, you know, gravitate to one option or another, and push for that option, and so it's.
I just wanted to know, and.
Yeah, but I think, I think seventeen, eighteen is realistic.
Mr. Pierce.
There are eight modules, correct, in the process for the MSBA, for us to go through eight?
Yes, there are, in fact, you can go on the website, and there are, I have it here, there are definitely eight different modules that you go through.
Not each one takes the same amount of time, or the same level of work, correct? So, assuming that you can do some of the preparatory work in-house before the commencement period begins, does that shorten the project outcome for us at all, if, if?
Possibly, but another one could be unexpectedly take more time, for example, with Thompson, it took us more time, cause remember that debate that was going on in, in different, uh, groups in town about whether we could use the field? And have the, that, that whole process took a long time, so you might save some time on one, but you might end up having more, and this is gonna be a very complex project, very, um, so, the one thing that, there was a meeting after, well, so, after the board meeting, we'll sort of, towards simultaneous to the end of it, people, the towns that were invited into the eligibility period, and, you know, they really caution us not to really talk about how long it would take, or, at this stage, but we, you certainly can use your experience with an elementary school, which was for, you know, at that time, three hundred and eighty students, brand-new, and how long it took us, and then you can look at what it would take for a high school, so, you know, you're looking at, it's certainly not gonna be a four-year process, five years might be a very, you know, very accelerated process.
Ducktail on that, I mean, since this is the year that they've accepted the most twenty-six districts or whatever, is there any thought or concern about them overextending as a, as a state agency, in terms of, will the funds be there when our license plate five comes up?
Or, or, or three, or what, they're, they're doing it in March, May, and July, um, no, they're very careful about this, and that is one, they don't, they sort of, well, they don't know the exact number, clearly, uh, as you, cause you go through this process, but at the same time, uh, they are very careful about not overextending, and they've figured this in, and, and then as you go through the different modules, you're gonna get down to the module, um, where you're gonna have your, um, your project scope and budget, and so at that point, they, they know where you are in the budget, and that money is encumbered.
Okay.
Their contribution is encumbered, now, one of the things that does get confusing for people as they go through this is that, you know, even though you get your base rate, and we'll probably get that sometime in, in the, this first part, that could actually change, because when you actually go to the building, and you start going through all the different parts, some of it may not be eligible for reimbursement, for example, in this building, I am, well, I don't wanna say emphatically, but I think it would be very likely that we would not get any reimbursement for any town offices, for example. If you were, if you were another high school that wanted to put a turf field in the back, there's no reimbursement on that, a swimming pool.
Cause it's not deemed, what, educational?
It's not in the, it's not, it's not, um, well, it's not that it's not educational, there's certain, certain things that they will not reimburse you on. So, in other words, if you decide to go ahead with that, even though it's not reimbursable, um, then the percentage that they're paying out of the project can change.
Right, I, I just don't want there to be any sort of, uh, for lack of a better word, squeeze in terms of districts that have come before us, and then by the time they get to us, they'll be less willing to partner in the kind of school that we want for Arlington, you know, if we say we want it for this amount of students, they'll say, well, we can't give it to you for this amount of students, we can't give you a percent, um, partnership for that amount, we have to limit you to, I don't want that for us.
They're very well managed that way, I, I wouldn't be concerned about that.
Okay.
They're pretty consistent in terms of the way they deal with people, and one of the reasons why, why we're there is that, uh, back in the old program, uh, you just think of Newton North, when they just loaded up everything you could possibly want in a wish list and got a sixty-some-odd percent reimbursement, uh, as, as a matter of right by the way it was done, so what they did was they set a series of standards of the things that they will pay for, they will bill, they will pay for this amount of square footage, for this number of students, and this, these kind of things, but not those amenities, so if we wanted amenities into the building, that would be outside the reimbursement, we have to do it a hundred percent town funding.
And you have to be careful with that too, which is the experience that Concord had recently, and I don't, won't go into it tonight, but there's a fine line between paying for an amenity, and whether it, it goes beyond what the partnership agreement is, anyway, so.
Early childhood, is that something they reimburse?
Um, I did hear from another superintendent yesterday that, yes, they, they did reimburse in their school, yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, indeed, this is good news, we now go to superintendent report, and we had a special town meeting on Monday, didn't we?
We certainly did.
And it was very special, and very, very, very beneficial.
And it was actually top of my list.
Yeah, I, I saw it on the list here.
It, it, uh.
It's easy when I've got cue cards.
It actually, I was, I couldn't have been more pleased, that, that the town meeting, I wanna, I wanna express my gratitude on behalf of all of our schools, to town meeting members, and to the community for supporting Stratton and Thompson, the, the way they did that evening, it really was, um, I think it showed a great show of support, and I do know from talking with, um, one of our representatives, that that's like something that actually MSBA does take note of too, is, cause that is a show of support for the buildings in the school districts, so that was absolutely terrific, and so we're moving forward with, um, the Stratton project, and, um, moving forward with, uh, funding two modulators at Thompson Elementary next year, just terrific as well. So, and, and I, I also, before we end the conversation on the high school, I do wanna also say thank you to everybody who participated, and Diane in particular, in working on the, um, the statement of interest, I think that we did a, I think we did a very good job, and certainly the second time we did it, we did even a better job, but the, the, the school spoke for itself when they came for senior study, it's clear we need that, but there still was a lot of collaboration on doing a good job on the SLI, and so wanna acknowledge that and thank everybody.
All right, um, okay, so, we'll come back to the Professional Learning Network, um, cause I, I'll have Dr. Cheston talk about that, but you had mentioned the Martin Luther King, um, event, and we did get a declaration, this, this year, the Martin Luther King Birthday Celebration Committee wanted to acknowledge and commemorate the fifty years Metco has been in our, our district, and, um, it's, sometimes, you know, it's like when you take a, you get a birthday, and you hear the new number, and you go, how did we, how did that happen, you know, especially the big ones, and fifty was quite a, quite a significant number, and Arlington stands out in that, the, soon as, as soon as the program opened up, Arlington was right there, seven communities, it's grown since then, um, so we are, we are one of the originals, and so in honoring, um, this event, this milestone, um, the Martin Luther King Committee honored three people who have been very important to that, one of which is Doc, uh, Dr. Jean McGuire, who is an icon, she was, she has been the executive director, I believe, since nineteen seventy-three, and she has been an amazing force, uh, for Metco, um, expanding Metco, helping get Metco funding for our districts, and she was honored that night and, and attended, um, we also acknowledged Steve Pereira, who has been, who worked in Arlington for thirty-two years as the Metco Director, and he was there that night as well, and Steve has, as you know, remained very active in many ways, both in Arlington and in the district, as well as outside.
And Steve is, as you know, remained very active in many ways, both in Arlington and in the district as well as outside. And one of his activities in the district was being AAA president for a number of years. And then we also honored our current Director of Metco, which is Margaret Credle-Thomas. And it was terrific to have them, all three of them there that night. We also, which I thought was a particular treat, was having some of our graduates come back. And recent and even graduates that graduated some years ago. And before the event, I had a chance to talk to one of the women, who's now a kindergarten teacher and has been for quite a while in Boston. And she just, I tried to talk her into coming here. But she's very happy and has very fond memories of her years here. And so, that, the event went really well. And Pearl Morrison, again this year, outdid herself. She just, she does so well as the moderator. There was a quote, some of the literature that was there that night, but there's a quote that, that someone found from Martin Luther King, which I read, I read that night and then I've read it since then. It's just, I thought I want to, I would like to share it with everybody because I think it is, in the, in the world that we're in today, it really resonates. "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times a challenge and controversy." So, he's a man who speaks truths over many years. So, it was a great event and I think Arlington should be very proud of the fact that they do this every year. And, and there had to be two hundred and fifty people there easily. It was a great event. Did you want to talk about the learning network? Because that was.
Sure. I think we've talked about this a little bit with the committee, but we are part of a professional learning network. We were selected to participate that, in that, that's taking a look at teacher leadership and lab site model similar to what we have. The group of folks, including Ms. Hanson, myself, Tammy McBride, another one of our literacy specialists, Matt Coleman, who is our math director, Carolyn Shettyack, who's one of our math coaches, and Dad Dingman, who is the principal of Dallin, visited Wakefield and heard from their staff about what they're doing in terms of coaching and lab site models and we presented to them. So, we will have a long-term relationship with them throughout this year where we will visit each other's districts. And Arlington actually will be hosting a meeting at Edco because, as you know, we have slight issues with parking during the day in Arlington. So, we'll be at Edco, but we'll be hosting the March meeting of the PLN, which involves eight districts? Yeah, eight districts across Massachusetts that are focusing on teacher leadership. So, it was a great opportunity for us. They have a beautiful new middle school that we got to see. So, it was kind of interesting for us to see what a new school looks like at another, another district. But also for us to hear what they're challenged with and what we're challenged with and to get ideas from one another. And we'll be continuing to do that throughout the year.
Couple more things. ACMI would like to do, is planning on doing, a series of segments honoring Black History Month, which you know is in February. And one of the program managers, in fact, who Ms. Starks worked with, Sarah Power-Funkel, is actually the person behind this, this event. And what they want to, what they want to interview people about is what does Black History Month mean to you? And that is the only question they're going to ask in the interview. And our town manager, Adam Chapellane, has set aside space and time in the Lions Hearing Room, which is on the second floor, and inviting all of you, if you can fit in time to come for a short interview about this. I'll send you these in an email, but I also want to say publicly because the public is invited to come. And the times are this coming Monday, February first, from ten to one. Granted, that will limit people who are working. But then on February third, that's Wednesday, it's from one to three P.M. And then on Thursday, February eleventh, from three to seven P.M. And I will send that out to all parents as well and staff, our students. I'm hoping that we will take, have some students go over and participate in this as well. So, it's just one question, what does Black History Month mean to you? Let's, I want to just talk a little bit about the February twenty-fourth. We're going to have a forum for elementary parents on the Common Core and the Park Assessment on February twenty-fourth. It's been scheduled at Thompson Elementary and I'm going to let Dr. Cheston give a couple more details about it.
So, it will be from seven to nine. It is for elementary parents. We will also be having a meeting sponsored by OPEC and we're waiting to get the date for that for grade six, seven, and eight parents. So, this will be a meeting for elementary parents, particularly, all are welcome, but it's particularly for parents who have students in grades three, four, and five. There will be also a separate meeting for bishop parents because, as we've discussed, bishop is going to be doing the test using computer-based testing. And so, we'll be having, I'll be attending the bishop PTO along with Ms. Hanson, Ms. McBride, and Mr. Coleman to talk about the testing environment that will be specific to bishop. But all are welcome to either or both presentations. And we'll be talking about the schedule and how we'll be preparing students, but, you know, really how we're just test-driving it and really want students to feel comfortable but not pressured. And that's exactly how we want our staff to feel as well.
Twenty-fourth at the Thompson, not at the.
At the Thompson.
Twenty-fourth is at Thompson, yes.
Yep, and we'll send that reminder out to you and to all parents as well. Multiple reminders, as we talked about. The last thing is kindergarten registration. That is going to be occurring in March. Parents are going to be getting letters. We're, in fact, all the letters are going to, I think, leave here on the ninth of February because the registration will begin in early March. We've, a little, a little bit later than, about a week later than we were last year because we've invested in some new software and been working to make sure that that is up and running and we'll be launching it. But all of that will be happening very soon. I know, we already are getting calls and have been actually for the last few weeks about when kindergarten registration is. And so, we're going to put all those dates on the website. They've just been finalized. That's it.
Okay. We now go to the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of minutes, regular school committee minutes from September twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen, December tenth, two thousand fifteen, and January fourteenth, two thousand sixteen. Approval of warrants, number one-six-one-zero-zero, dated January seventh, two thousand sixteen, in the amount of six hundred fifty-five thousand, five hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. An approval of warrant, one-six-one-zero-four, dated January fourteenth, two thousand sixteen. Total warrant amount, two hundred eighteen thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Moved by Dr. Seuss, seconded by Ms. Starks. All in favor? Oh, wait, we have.
Need to pull January fourteenth, please.
Pulling January fourteenth. Anything else that needs to be pulled? Okay, all in favor?
Was I here on the tenth? Or is that the one I missed?
You, hmm.
One in December.
You were there.
I was there.
You missed the next one.
I missed the next one, okay. Then don't pull that one.
Okay, so we.
Just the fourteenth then.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Now, we will move the minutes of January fourteenth. Motion by Mr. Thielman, seconded by Ms. Starks. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Okay, one abstention, six in favor. That gets us through there. Now, we go to the Subcommittee and Liaison Reports and Announcements. We start with Policies and Procedures. Mr. Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll be meeting on Monday, February first, at eight A.M. Five, five P.M. Five P.M. here. We're going to go over school committee meeting dates and times for the coming year as well as a couple other issues.
Okay. Facilities, Ms. Starks.
Budget first.
Oh, budget first, I'm sorry.
You've heard most of what we talked about with budget. We had a meeting yesterday. In addition, we talked about how the budget will be presented and work towards getting you the color-coded list that you saw today. And we'll be meeting again in the future, but we haven't set the date yet.
Okay, now we go to Facilities, Ms. Starks.
Facilities met last Thursday to start the discussion on the middle school enrollment issues. And to that end, you have in Novus a document called Handling the Enrollment Challenges at Odysseum, which is a only partially filled-in table. But I thought before we spent much more time filling in the table, it would be best to have all of your eyes on it. So, our goal is to have this document filled in to the best of our ability with at least estimates of timing and costs, et cetera, for the school enrollment task, school enrollment task force meeting that's happening on February twenty-third, which is the week after February break. Facilities is meeting on the ninth of February, before that, to try to make sure that we can actually fill it all in. So, at the Thursday meeting, we kind of created this table and the information that's in that document and then asked superintendent to go off and try to fill in as much of it as she could. And then we're going to come back on the ninth. Review that, look at it, and then hopefully have it ready for the twenty-third. But I was hoping that while you guys had a chance to look at it, you could give me some feedback on what you think and what kinds of changes or other items should be on there.
Dr. Allison Happy.
Can I make one suggestion to add, which is including, I don't know what you call the model, but where teachers don't have a home room, there's a staff room that they share, and then the classrooms are able to be utilized more. I know that won't fix everything forever and I know it's not necessarily a popular option with teachers, but it might help during the first crunch time.
All right.
For a little while.
Okay. Any other comments or remarks regarding this report? Mr. Thielman.
There was a comment by a parent, by Timor, I forgot your last name. Yontar, yeah. Tonight, I, and I, and I, you know, the Subcommittee meets on the ninth, February ninth. And so, what you had to say tonight about speeding things along or working as quickly as possible, that's going to be taken up at the meeting on the ninth at five P.M. here.
And I would point out that Subcommittee meetings are far less formal and we invite the public to carry on a conversation with us at that point.
And, you know, one, just to, and Dr. Bodie, you know, one of the things we will need for the meeting on the ninth is information and some of the things we've been talking about. So, any cost information, operating cost information and operating cost comparison between using a new school, creating additional space at the Odysseum, using the Gibbs, so all that stuff. The more information we have on the ninth, the faster we can move the process along.
Right.
District Accountability Curriculum Instruction Assessment, Mr. Thielman.
Okay, so, we, we are, our Subcommittee is tasked with coming up with the evidence Dr. Bodie has to present to the school committee for her evaluation. The policy requires that by March thirty-first of the fiscal, of the, March thirty-first of two thousand and sixteen, or March thirty-first every year, Dr. Bodie has to give an interim report on, for her evaluation, on the goal, on where she is at or the district is at and she is at on the goals that have been selected, the standard goals and as well as the goals that have been selected. So, if you open up your document, you'll see what the committee has come up with, Subcommittee has come up with for first read is the following pieces of evidence. So, evidence for each standard. Standard one, instructional leadership is a vision statement or another document describing instructional leadership in the Arlington Public Schools. Two, the teacher leadership curriculum within the APS Professional Development Plan. And then three, park scores correlated with prior MKS results showing academic performance outcomes of Arlington students K through twelve, including subgroups. One of the reasons why we picked three measures is because, correct me if I'm wrong, in a teacher evaluation, generally you give three measures per standard.
Three pieces of evidence, yes.
Yeah, three pieces of evidence, my apologies. Management and Operations, Budget Presentation of the School Committee Finance Committee and Town Meeting, Reports, Materials, Minutes of the School Enrollment Task Force, SC Members' Observations of the Superintendent in Public Meetings and Evidence of Her attendance at Public Meetings. And standard three, Family and Community Engagement is the newsletter, the newsletters that the superintendent sends out each month. List of Events of the Past Year Designed to Engage the Public in School Issues. So, Dr. Bodie's assistant, administrative assistant will put together a calendar of the park meeting and other meetings that take place. Results of a Survey of Parents and Community Members of APS, issues if conducted by the Community Relations Subcommittee. And then standard four, we came up with One for Professional Culture, which was an annual staff survey. Results, the survey to be drafted by the Curriculum Instruction Assessment and Accountability Subcommittee in April and distributed to staff in May. And then Evidence for Two Practice Goals. One for is the Park Reports, which is the same information as above. And then the other Evidence Goal that Dr. Bodie chose, Develop a Plan to Address Space Needs. And the evidence required is the McKibben Report, a Plan to Respond to the Report and Communication Received or Sent to the MSBA Regarding the AHS Rebuild. So, that's what we came up with. This is a first read.
Can you tell me where that is? You said it was in Novus.
It's in Novus.
It's in Novus.
Under Community Relations.
It's, it's in the reports down there. It's down here, reference material.
Okay, got it.
Superintendent Evaluation.
Okay, great.
So. Mr. Heiner.
Just a quick logistic thing. The, what Mr. Thielman mentioned at the beginning on the thirty-first, that's the fifth Thursday of the month. So, I'd just suggest for Dr. Bodie's, the twenty-fourth of March would be the only meeting prior to that we'd be having this year. The policy request by the thirty-first, the meeting is on, we have five Thursdays that month. I assume we're not going to meet three times.
But it doesn't have to show up on a meeting.
Second or fourth, yeah.
That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Community Relations, Dr. Seuss.
Yeah, do you want me to present the survey?
So, just to close the loop on this.
Okay, go ahead.
If anyone has any suggestions or changes, you know, we need to hear about it. Maybe you can send Karen your thoughts that can go to the Subcommittee. And if we collect a lot of stuff, then we'll meet again. If not, we'll presume this is okay and we'll have a second reading in a week, in two weeks.
Okay, great.
Dr. Seuss.
Yeah, you want me to present the survey as well as the other stuff?
If it's within your domain, go for it.
So, well, we had a meeting tonight and I'll go backwards. We took up three things, the last of which was a discussion about sending a survey to parents and educators and staff about calendar issues. Every year, we worry about various calendar decisions. Should we start before Labor Day, after Labor Day? Various other questions. And it's a very complicated issue, but it'd be great to get a sense of everyone's opinion. Perhaps when we do this survey, there's no consensus. It's like twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five. But perhaps there is and it'd be great to know. So, that's our goal. So, Ms. Hanson and I are meeting next week to try to craft something to go out at the same time to both teachers and, and parents, to ask these basic questions. The thing we took up middle is just a discussion about what we're going to do for the Common Core slash Park presentation. Some discussion about how to solicit questions from parents before, during, and potentially after the presentation. And then some discussion, we'd once talked about potentially merging that discussion with a big-picture discussion about testing and Common Core. And we decided that was too complicated to do in that one meeting and we'd have to pull those things apart. The first thing that we took up was the issue of district lines or buffer zones. This was something that we talked about referring to the Community Relations Committee last time we met. And the sense of the Community Relations Committee is that it is a valuable thing to do to talk about especially expanding buffer zones with the caveat that we would be operating under the assumption be operating under the assumption that we would do something similar to last time. Existing kids would be grandfathered, and siblings would be able to stay in the same school as their siblings. The idea was that this would not do any drastic solutions, but it might help us in certain cases when, for example, we might be able to get away with seven grades at a, in an area rather than eight, if we expand the buffer zones. If we do this, and there was, it was unclear when we were going to start the process, but, but, but if we do indeed start the process, we thought that it would, it should take at least a year, you know, or something around that time, to get community input, to really sort of flesh things out. So actually, what I wanted to get from the committee tonight, this is the Subcommittee sort of sense, but is, is from the rest of the committee, what are your feelings about that kind of process, beginning that kind of process, and with those assumptions? Yeah. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
April you get this.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Hayner?
I, I think it's very important. You said it, it's, it's very limited, it's going to take some time. I think, again, I just want to emphasize to the community that this is not going to be an immediate solution to the enrollment issue. Thank you.
Anything else? My one comment is, I got an email from a Precinct 9 resident who wrote to me as a town meeting member, saying, what are you doing trying to move me over to the Stratton School on the bishop? And I said, wait a minute, no, no, no. We're not going and making radical changes. We're going to do this, take a look at things, and if we expand the buffer zones, if you're in the bishop, you're going to stay in the bishop. But it's, it's just the first level of conversation, which we're really charged with talking about. Whether we come up with any kind of changes that makes sense or solve a problem is another story. And we're not going to start making changes if they don't solve a problem. Anything else, Dr. Seuss?
Yes. So I felt I should finally report out the survey results that we've been batting around for a long time. It was never time-critical, so we kept pushing it on the agenda. But a, over a year ago, we did a survey of parents, primarily around communication. We received 1,366 results, about 35% of parents, families with, families within our district. I actually think that's a pretty good number. It's not, you know, when you do surveys, it's not bad. There, there's a two-page survey summary on Novus, if anybody wants to look at it. But I'll just talk about the highlights. Parents thought we were, their, parents are very proud of their schools. They feel their children are proud of their schools, that they're, that they have excellent schools. They feel that we have great teachers, and that the parents and the community is engaged, and that kids are happy and self-reliant. They're generally happy with communication. So those are the really good highlights. Areas of challenge, things that we have to work on, and I have to stress, these are not things that we're unique in, in respect in a district. Homework, many parents, some parents felt that homework was too much, especially at the middle school level. Anxiety, this we know is a national problem, that we've seen rates of anxiety increase and social and emotional issues sort of become more center-stage. And Arlington is not alone in that. Some parents wanted more challenging curriculum, more ability to be involved, and some, some issues about discipline. But the question that I actually wanted to answer when I suggested two years ago to do this survey is my fantasy question. So I wanted to report on that. I wanted to know if some, if we were given a windfall amount, what would your priorities be as parents? And parents had the opportunity to choose three priorities. So, so these are my top three choices. Most parents unsurprisingly chose that they would like to add more classroom teachers so as to alleviate overcrowding, you know, to make classrooms smaller. 27% of parents chose this as one of their top three choices. Second and third most popular among elementary school parents were split between adding foreign language to the elementary school and making the school day longer. And we had a limited number of options, so the, you know, parents might have other, other priorities, but those were, those are the ones that they wanted of our options. Middle school parents wanted math coaches, increases in technology, and a longer school day. High school parents wanted math coaches, increases in technology. And this was interesting. Fourth choice among high school parents only was eliminating sports and music fees. So this was important to 11% of the parents we surveyed. They chose it as one of their top three options, but it was the fourth most common. So it was something interesting to know, because I know many parents are passionate about that sports and music fees are too high. We all certainly feel they're too high. But just to know, where does this fall in our priorities? Because as Dr. Allison Ampe mentioned, budget, to some extent, is a zero-sum game, and when you add to one, you have to take from something else. So that's it. I mean, some open response. People talked about the utterly dispiriting facilities of the high school. Well, thankfully, we are on the road to changing that. You know, class sizes, stuff about crowded facilities, that, stuff like that. So, so the survey results are on Novus, available to the public, and the summary is as well.
Thank you. Executive Session Minute Review Subcommittee, Mr. Hayner?
The, I have spoken to town council, he's willing to go through it. I'm working with Ms. Fitzgerald to make a copy. I'll secure it and hand-carrie it and share with him, and hopefully he can fit us in, and we'll be, yeah, I'll have a report with those that we can release, those that we can't release, sometime, probably in April.
Thank you. Warrant Committee, we all got paid?
We didn't get paid.
You didn't get paid, no. Yeah. You got your usual zero check.
I got paid. I got my nothing.
Not, not on my signature. Oh, yeah, okay. They all got paid.
Yeah, we're all going to get a 10% raise next year.
Right.
Thanks, thanks to the governor. School Enrollment Task Force.
I think you've heard.
I think we've heard that, yeah.
It's the 23rd.
Okay. That brings us to the conclusion of our public agenda. We're about to do executive session, so the motion will be to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union and/or non-union personnel, or contract negotiations with union and/or non-union, in which, if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect, and to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation, in which, if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect. Collective bargaining may also be conducted. Among the list of things would be AEA Unit C Administrative Assistant Contract Update, and negotiations for non-union personnel. To do this executive session, motion by Mr. Thielman, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Roll call, Mr. Hayner?
Aye.
Mr. Pierce?
Aye.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
Yes.
Ms. Starks? Mr. Thielman's yes. Dr. Seuss?
Yes.
The chair votes in the affirmative. It is seven to nothing. We are in executive session.
We're not returning.
We're not returning.
We will not be, we will not be, in advice, we will not be returning. Nice to meet you, Ms., Dr. Yantar. I hope we see you again.